Focus a lot on wildfire because we know that's one of the most likely events to happen in Nevada County.
Ready, set, go is really built around the wildfire premise to prepare residents to be ready before an event, to move into the set posture when there's a red flag or a fire is near you, and then to go when it's time to go.
Essentially, in its simplest form, it's a three-tiered community emergency preparedness plan.
I have lived in this house, which we built, my husband and I, 26 years ago now, actually. We selected the hardy plank, the concrete siding, and also the metal roof. Then, when we moved up here and heard about the 49er fire, that's when we started to say, wow, this really is even more important than we first realized.
So, the 49er fire is one of the most historic fires in Nevada County's history. They figured it changed the laws of the state of California that said, this is how you have to protect your home. That came out of Nevada County.
Steve Eubanks came from the Fire Safe Council, and the main thing we needed to pay attention to was the ladder fuels. Planting has been removed from the edges of the house so that it does not touch the house. It was an incredible service from the Fire Safe Council to come out and spend a couple of hours going through this property.
So, the ready phase is when there's no immediate threat to you and your family. This is the time where you should be doing education and planning, whether that be training, educating yourself, or accumulating equipment, hardening your home, creating defensible space.
Defensible space is really all about creating a buffer zone between your house and flammable vegetation. We really focus on defensible space around the home, that first 100 feet, but also around the roadway, too. Another aspect of the ready phase is hardening the home, and really what that means is making your home more resilient to wildfire.
That's going to be putting the fine-grained mesh around the vents of your home so that embers won't get into under your house or into the eaves of your house. That's going to be using non-combustible materials on your deck and around your home. So, when an ember storm comes through, it's not going to ignite your home itself.
I currently live here in Grass Valley with my parents. All of us have sleep apnea, so we all have CPAP machines that require power in order to run.
I also use a nebulizer, and that's used to disperse medication that I need to give myself breathing again. When we have safety shut-offs, we have to hook up our equipment to batteries that have inverters.
We have a generator that powers some of the things around the house, but then I obtained a pretty substantial battery from Freed, and it was so easy to go through the process to obtain a battery that I would recommend it to anyone who might have medical needs that require power, or really anything. I would highly recommend contacting Freed.
So, whether it's a snowstorm or a public safety power shut-off, we really want folks to be thinking about, okay, what are the things I'll need on hand to?
We will reconvene the special meeting of December 13, 2023, which was adjourned yesterday until today, Thursday, December 14, 2023. What I would like to do is go over what was done yesterday. We had staff presentation, petitioner presentation, went back to the board for questions. We had public comment, and we closed public comments, so there'll be no public comment today. We heard the planning summation, and we heard the petitioner summation, and we are now at a board discussion and eventually the deliberations. And I would like to note that there have been some changes that were made to the resolution. And prior to any action on the resolution, we will go through, or staff will go through the changes that were made, redlined, so, but we'll do a questioning first. So, with that, I'd like to recognize supervisor whose district this project is within, and that would be Supervisor Swarthout.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you all for being here and making these proceedings as respectful and as possible, and everybody's good behavior. I really, I didn't ask any questions yesterday. I really didn't have any questions. I think that both of you laid your arguments out exceedingly well, and I appreciate all the work that's gone into this. I'm not sure that I would agree with the petitioner's request for vested rights, and I base that on a couple of things that I've worked on in my years of local government. You know, you talk about the economics of why the gold mine shut down, and that it hadn't been opened because of the economy and the cost of the price of gold. But when you go back and you look at the history of the price of gold in the early 80s, or 1980, I believe, gold was over $2,000 an ounce, and it's fluctuated between that and what it currently sits at today for 43 years. So, I feel like if there had been a vested right here, somebody would have come in and done the work and reopened the mine, previous to the application that we have in front of us today. So, you know, I, like I said, I appreciate all the work that's gone into this. The decision that we make today certainly isn't the finality of your possibility of opening the mine, since you do have an application in front of us for a use permit. I don't believe this is the last bite of the apple for actually opening the mine, but I just, I don't think I see the argument for vested rights with certainty for me.
Thank you, Lisa. At this point, I'd ask to rekindle, keep this through a discussion, and we can do deliberations and conclusions afterwards. So, Sue, would you go next?
So, I, this was, it was very interesting. Yesterday, I was up a lot last night. I came in with some ideas in my head, and then I had to go home and look at some and rethink some things that were interesting to me. And I have a couple of questions, if you guys could answer those for me. So, yesterday during the meeting, David Watkins stated that M. Gold did not qualify for vested rights, and it was because of a change of operation. That was the comment. So, I'd like to understand that, and what would make it different with Rice Gold? Why would that not be a change of use? You're going to do extracting different, you're going to do the whole process is different. So, that was one of my questions. If you want me to do them all at one time, I can go through those.
We can go one and we, who are you asking that of?
They could answer that. I have a couple of questions like that that I'd like clarified.
Okay, go ahead. We'll do each question.
All right. If I understand the question correctly, why didn't M. Gold not have a vested right?
Correct.
As you're asking. And I have to say, I cannot answer that question because I have not analyzed the information about M. Gold's history and the use of the property in relation to M. Gold. I don't know enough about that to be able to give you an answer as to whether or not they did have a vested right, whether or not there was continuing activity that they could demonstrate related to all of the property involved in their application, because I do not know, in particular, the APNs involved in their application. So, I could not answer that question. Okay?
Yes, thank you, Supervisor. I think David spoke well on that issue. I've also spoken with David, and the reason that they did not assert a vested right was not that they did not believe they had one. They, you know, a vested right has a scope, which means a volume of material, geographic location, and an operational type, like what types of activities. And what he said yesterday was, we did not assert our vested right in the process because we wanted to do something that was bigger and different than the vested right, not because we believe we didn't have one. And the differences were, they wanted to do twice the historic production of the Idaho-Maryland Mine, twice the numbers of tons per day. They wanted to have a tile manufacturing operation that would turn waste rock into tile, which had never been done in the history of the mine. He believed those were outside of the scope of the vested right, therefore, they applied for a use permit in that situation.
Okay. May I respond to that, Supervisor? So, if I were land use council to M. Gold, and I believe, they believe they had a vested right, I would tell M. Gold that they should definitely pursue the vested right, then we would seek concurrently an application to expand what we believe to be the vested right. That's what I would do if I were their land use council.
Okay, so that's some of the things that were back. Another thing, too, so we talked about this, you talked about a taking of the land and those types of things, which was interesting to me since I've been in that situation. The land was sold to be a lumber mill, which it did for many, many years, which is a change of use, and it was of value to the property. So, and in that, it was also stated that Lot 7 was never sold, but I believe, in my research, I found that it was all part of the land that was sold at the time. Could you clarify that for me?
Yeah, yeah, I can clarify that. So, when you look at the staff report, I think the way it characterizes the sale of property isn't quite accurate. It says that, you know, the Brunswick site was sold for a lumber mill. There was what's basically the SPI property that was owned by Sierra Pacific at one point, that was sold, and it had a lumber mill on it associated with the mine. Then, it was sold and continued to be used as a lumber mill, which was part of the vested right associated with the mining operation. But Lot 6 and 7, which are part of BET Acres, they were never sold and separated from the underground mineral rights ever in the history of this property since vesting. So, that Lot 6 and 7, that's always been associated, connected with the mineral rights and owned, you know, by the same owner.
Right, right. I'm not talking mineral rights. I get, understand mineral rights. We all own our, well, not all of us, but we own our mineral rights, and I understand the importance of that.
Yes, yes.
But the land did sold and was all used as a lumber mill for years.
No, just a portion, just a portion. That Lot 6 and 7 was not used as a lumber mill. It has the Union Hill shaft on it, it has the New Brunswick shaft on it.
Okay.
Which are necessary to mine. Those were never put to other use like that.
Okay. And then, next, I had another one question, because I feel like some of this is, we keep talking about Hanson, and this is confusing to me. It's not the same kind of operation whatsoever. We keep going back to Hanson, and so what tells me there's not a precedent sentence for some of this, because we keep going back there, and why are we justifying all this through an action that really didn't have the same effect?
Well, in Hanson, there, I think there were two issues that were, several issues discussed in Hanson that help us here. So, when council lacks precedent from California, when there isn't a lot, we have to use what we have and try to understand what the court was telling us, based on our knowledge of land use and mining and other laws and how they're applied. And so, both council, and as I said this yesterday, there's this paucity of law. We both used Hanson, and some, in some regard, we agree on the two, there is a two-part, you know, two criteria that we look at as to intent and acts, overt acts and/or omissions with regard to continued operations. And so, there's some things that we agree with, so we're both looking at the same language. So, it's appropriate for us to rely on Hanson, even though the situation is different. So, for example, I tried to explain where this situation was distinguishable from Hanson, and why their interpretation of specific verbiage didn't apply because our situation was so different, or where it might be similar. That's all that council can do when you don't have a lot of case law. You're kind of the, you know, first through the bushes, you're going to get a few scratches, somebody is, on this area of the law.
Yeah, I'll just point out, Supervisor, that all other counties that we've looked at that have done vested rights determinations rely on Hanson for all manner of mining. And I know there are specific differences between this operation where there's surface mining and underground mining, and Hanson, which was all surface mining, and, but we've analyzed those factors, we've included that in our letter, and I think you find that the factors that the court looked at in Hanson, such as fluctuation of the market, they apply even more when underground mining is considered. In fact, the cycles are even longer, the amount of exploration that one needs to do is even greater. The actual, you know, size of the project, although it's all underground, in this case, the amount of rock that was moved out of that mine over the years amounts to the Great Pyramid of Giza. It is a monumental development. The shaft itself, you know, would cost $60 million to recreate, the one that's on, you know, Lot 6 and 7, just one of the shafts. So, this is a huge scale of project that takes a long time to build. And so, I think while Hanson is applicable, a lot of those factors apply even more so in this case.
I'd like to add one piece that interconnects with the constitutional rights aspect of this. And when a vest, when a property right vests as rises, the right that now belongs to Rice vested for its predecessors in 1954, it's a right to continue those uses of the property. And that does take into account what the, what the particular use is. So, in Hanson, the facts, I believe, outside counsel for the county pointed out that the mine could have been restarted within two hours. Maybe that's true for a particular mine of that kind, that mine's aggregate, but there are a lot of industries that cannot be started in two hours. Gold mining is clearly one of them. It's particularly true today when there's a lot of regulatory permitting and other agency approvals that a mine owner would have to go through. But it's true of many, many industries that they cannot restart at the flip of a switch. And that doesn't mean that those industries don't get constitutional rights. They do. You get the constitutional right to continue the use of your property at the moment that the government came in and attempted to regulate and take that use away. That's what the vested right is protecting, as I mentioned yesterday. It's protecting the government from having to compensate the property owner for taking that right from them, and it's protecting the property owner from losing the expected value of their property.
I guess this is the hard one for me. So, where does that timeline come in? So, we're talking 80 years here. The world has changed, the community has grown. So, where does that timeline come in where that all those things don't roll into it besides just a, the, I guess, because we came back to this whole part, we were talking about SMARA, right? And you guys, that doesn't have any, no bearing at all, because there's no reclamation going on. But there would have to be a huge amount of reclamation going on if you had planned all these years to keep on doing mining. So, these are just some gaps in that. I mean, I would say that then a logging mill probably has vested rights, but I can guarantee you, they're not going to be able to go back and just build their mill. I can tell you a few of them that were here before 54 that are gone now, and they, do they have vested rights? And so, I just, these are just some questions as we go through. I'm a property rights advocate myself.
Yeah.
And I get that, so I just have, these are real gaps in the conversation.
No, I understand your question, and I would just point to, I don't know if we could bring it up, but the chart that we displayed yesterday that shows it really wasn't 70 years with nothing going on. They were trying to, you know, they were mining, for one thing, they were doing things that are actually regulated as mining, which is, you know, crushing rock on the property, doing exploration, having mining leases over that period. It's not just a period of 70 years where they were doing nothing and not doing mining. They were doing activities that are actually regulated as mining over that period. I'd point out, just to respond to one comment that I heard, which is, during the 80s, why didn't it restart when gold prices peaked then? We presented evidence in the petition which shows that in the 80s, all the money for gold mining, and there was gold mining going on in the 80s, it went to large open-pit mines. That's where all the gold money went in the 1980s, and there's all these open-pit mines in California and Nevada where that money went, and there weren't, there wasn't investment into underground mines because of the economics then. And I understand, it looks like, well, gold went up, why didn't the mine restart? Yeah, and it was also in probate in the early 80s as a transfer to the BET Group, so that's another reason. As far as the, you know, just the constitutional right, the owners of this property were trying over the years to reopen it. There's, if we brought up that chart from my PowerPoint, you would see, you know, over and over again, they're reserving rights.
Can we bring that chart back up?
Yeah. There, yeah. Let me see which page it is from our PowerPoint here.
I think it was on ours.
It's in, we have it in ours. Well, probably about halfway through here.
I think it's our chart.
They have a chart, too, that was a little different. But I like our chart. Our chart says a lot, too.
So, I think what you see from this chart is, there were mining activities going on during this whole period, attempts to reopen the mine, various types of attempts, leasing the property to mining companies, doing exploration, various permitting efforts. So, they were not successful during the period here, you know, where gold was down, and then it peaked, and then it dropped again, in fully reopening the underground mine. That is, that is true. That's what we're trying to do, you know, now. They were not successful in doing that, but the Constitution doesn't say you lose your property right if you're trying to use your property, but you're unsuccessful in doing it over the years. That's, that's not the test. They haven't succeeded in fully opening the mine over this period, because the gold of price, I mean, the price of gold was really low, fluctuated, the market wasn't right for it. But, you know, now we're at a point where it is, and I don't think it makes sense that a property right can be taken away when someone has been trying to use it over the years, and that's not even the legal test, that they need to have abandoned it through the two-part test, that there's no clear and convincing evidence of that. In fact, we provided, you know, more than the petitioner needs to show. We've shown affirmative evidence, they were trying to resume it over this long period. But there's really a global, you know, economic reason that it was difficult and they weren't successful. So, it just doesn't make sense that you can strip someone of a property right, a constitutional property right, when they really have been trying to resume and they haven't succeeded. That, you know, that's nowhere in the Fifth Amendment, that the government can take property if you've been trying to use it, but you just haven't quite succeeded yet.
And if I could add just two more things. One, on the constitutional dimensions of that. As I mentioned yesterday, this is comparable to other constitutional rights, and we require affirmative evidence of abandonment before we think someone has abandoned a constitutional right. I mentioned the example of the First Amendment. It is possible for people to abandon their First Amendment rights in particular circumstances, but they do so affirmatively. For example, if you take a job and contractually you're bound to serve your employer, then in the capacity of your work, you speak on behalf of your employer, and they can restrict your right to speak, including a government employer, because our First Amendment rights run against the government. Another example is a criminal defendant speedy trial right, for example. If they are going to give up their right to a speedy trial, and they often do, in order to have more time to prepare for proceedings, they do that in writing, and they do it in front of a judge. That's the kind of formality that we require before someone abandons a vested right. And my second point, if I may, is you mentioned that times have changed, and I know that that's something that came up in the public comments yesterday. Times have changed, and regulation has changed to match that. I'm sure Mr. Powell can speak in more detail to the number of state agencies, federal agencies, other approvals, environmental restrictions, that this mine would have to obey and live within and be accountable for, even if it were mining based on a vested right. And SMARA is one example. I think we've amply illustrated that when there was activity on these properties that met the threshold for a reclamation plan to be required by SMARA, that reclamation plan was filed, approved, and completed. So, SMARA is a perfect example of an overlay on top of the property, and there are many others like that. So, it's not the Wild West. This right isn't a Wild West right. Times have changed, regulation matches that, but the vested right doesn't go away.
Okay, that's still, for me, that's still a little not clear, because SMARA, when that took place, was only cleaning up what was already there. They didn't drill or bring any other rock up. That rock was already present, and they were actually cleaning the mess up. So, I just say, this is the thing, over time, I'm just looking at some of these, this has been really, it's very interesting. I think it's a precedent-setting thing, kind of interesting that it has to come. And I want to hear from Diane real quick, if you don't mind.
Thank you. Appreciate that, and I certainly didn't mean to interrupt you, and it is interesting, this is precedent-setting here. But what I, well, let's leave their slide up here instead of going back to our timeline. But if you look at the time, our timeline is focused between 1954 and 1963, because that's when everything was abandoned. They closed up shop and left, and you cannot string together a series of non-conforming uses and call it vested rights. People came in later on this property, the subject property, and they set up lumber operations. It would be, if there were some connection that showed there actually was mining continuously transpiring on the subject properties, this would be a different discussion. And when you look at the activities that they show between 1954 and 64, which is the bulk of our timeline that explains why we think abandonment occurred, there's a letter to Congress and reservation of mineral rights. We're right back to where we were yesterday. A reservation in and of itself does not indicate a lack of, you know, and intent to mine. It's maybe aspirational, maybe it's nothing, as you said. Everybody here has mineral rights under their property, and many people have reserved them. So, that is merely aspirational. It is not a concrete overt subjective action or failure to act that, something they should have done. And so, that's where we're stuck between 54 and 64, and after that, where all of this, these were other uses on this subject property, subject to use permits.
Interesting. Okay, with that, I'm going to relinquish my time now and come back, but I'd like, if I have more questions as we go, is that okay? Thank you, Chair.
Mr. Chair, can I just ask one question?
Yes, go ahead, Lisa.
Is there any chance I can answer the SMARA question? Because I don't think I addressed that properly about.
That's okay. Lisa, would you?
Yeah. So, this for our planning staff. So, the difference between what you would have to do, opening this mine with a reclamation plan, having a vested right, versus the regulatory process for a use permit, Brian, can you just highlight that a little bit to say what the differences are? Because I know that they're both regulatory processes, but there's vastly different standards.
Right. Well, the process that they're in now on this is seeking a conditional use permit and approval of a reclamation plan. If a vested right were found, there would still need to be approval of a reclamation plan and the SEQA document associated with that. So, we've gone to the, to the Planning Commission with the use permit and the, and the reclamation plan and the environmental documentation. The Planning Commission made a recommendation to the board, and the next step without this vested right hearing, or petition and hearing, would be going directly to the board. If the vested rights were approved, we would only be going forward, we'd go back to the Planning Commission for the approval of a reclamation plan and the SEQA document associated with that. And the reclamation plan is limited to how they will return the land to its original condition for the, you know, the intended purpose. And I believe under the current reclamation plan, it's for industrial purposes. They have to return the property when they're, when they're done, and for those types of uses in the future. And so, it's very, it's a limited document, its purpose is limited, but it does require SEQA analysis of that. But you wouldn't have this conditional use permit and all of that analysis that would need to be, you wouldn't have to certify a document related to a CUP only to that after the fact reclamation.
So, there's not the considerable amount of mitigation measures with a reclamation plan?
Correct.
That have the expectation that you would have in a use permit?
With the reclamation plan, it would be different because the With the reclamation plan, it would be different, because the project you're looking at is different, is what you're doing with the property, when the mining would be concluded, the activity in 80 years, how they would reclaim it. The environmental review would focus on that, not on everything that was focused on for a conditional use permit.
Okay.
That would be a limited environmental review.
Limited environmental review?
Correct.
And it doesn't regulate the actual mining operations?
No, no, but to, correct, it does not regulate it with mitigation measures and conditions of approval the same way you would be able to regulate a conditional use permit. I will, in all fairness, counsel was correct, that they still have to comply with, you know, state air quality laws and with water quality laws, they would still have to do that. But all of the specific measures that are identified currently in the SEQA document for the conditional, for the, yeah, conditional use permit, and those would become conditions of approval, those would not be present in just the reclamation plan.
Thank you.
There could be a few that are the same, but it would not be the same body of analysis or requirements.
Anything you want to add?
Are we in deliberation?
No.
No, just questions, none? Yeah, how many questions?
No questions?
No questions.
Okay. Heidi?
Yeah, thank you, and thanks to my colleagues for asking some of the questions I had too, I think, throughout this. I spent a lot of time with the documents and the exhibits and double-checking what was presented to us, what was given to us in advance, and then, you know, there was a lot of stuff kind of thrown at us yesterday, some of it new, and the issue of constitutional rights was something we, we didn't, we don't have an analysis from our counsel on that. So, it's been a little difficult for me to, to, to clear out the chaff from the actual important stuff. You wanted to say something?
On the constitutional issue, a taking would not occur simply by refusing, we believe, to approve vested rights. They would need to go back, at least a taking claim. We don't know that a taking would occur at all, because they would still have another use of the property, it could be a partial taking or no taking at all. So, but what would have to happen is, you would have to find that, as staff has recommended, that there is no vested right, then they would go back and have to see if they could get the use permit. Then if they didn't get the use permit, that would be more of an opportunity, it would be ripe to then bring in action for a taking. They may view it differently, they may think they need to bring in action for taking if a decision were made at this moment, but in reality, is, really isn't ripe until such time as a use permit would then potentially be denied, and maybe it would be granted. We don't know, because we didn't get that far.
I need to correct the record on this, because Ms. Kinderman is incorrect. There's actually two different potential takings. She's speaking about the taking of the property itself. That taking of the property, which includes the entirety, if a, if a use permit is denied, for example, that would be a taking of the entirety, 100% of the mineral rights, the mineral estate, which is a separate estate under California law. That taking becomes ripe at the moment that the use permit is denied. The taking that I was speaking about yesterday is the taking of the vested property right, it is a right to mine, and by denying that right, that is a 100% taking of the vested property right to mine, and that would become ripe at the moment that the vested right is denied.
Okay, so I think.
And that's their viewpoint, and that's fine.
Okay, yeah, so I think my point stands, that this came in late, and we haven't had the advantage of lots of information to.
Respectfully, this entire process is about a constitutional right, so the entire staff report is about whether the vested right exists, whether the constitutional right exists. Our position is that it does, and we've amply proven that based on the actual standards of review, that it's a preponderance of the evidence to prove that the vested right exists, that if it's been abandoned, the county must prove that by clear and convincing evidence. And because that vested right exists, if the board refuses to recognize it, that would be a taking.
Thank you. I'm going to go back and focus on what I had focused on throughout, which was, and the confusing part for me was the vested right piece. So, I think it's clear, we, there's the document, and we could pull that up, I think, from the, and it's in your report, this, the Brunswick site, where you have the annual report that says so many, so much, so many ounces were taken out in 1954, I think it was, or 55. So, to me, that's like the starting point, okay, there was some mining happening on one place in that year. After that, to me, it becomes very confusing, because you've got the scope and the operations, and it just feels like, so, so I'm asking for clarification, obviously, but let me just finish. So, it feels like you're asking for vested rights for everything. The core property, everything, potentially also, everything that you sold off, because of the language in here about they're being able to extend it. But it's unclear to me that, you know, so there's mining in one place, but you want the vested rights for everything, or that's your interpretation?
Well, I think it might be helpful to bring up a map, because I've heard a lot of questions, you know, from you and from other supervisors about which particular parcel we're claiming what, and what, you know, happened on what parcel. I think staff made some statements that confused it a little bit, just that, you know, there was, it was sold and it was all a logging, I'm sorry, a sawmill operation. It's not true, so maybe we could bring up a map. I think we have an exhibit on record that might be useful here. Okay. Could we bring up Exhibit 1 and 342? Is that possible to bring up exhibits? Do you have those available? You do not have those? Okay, well, we can.
I can find them if it's in your report.
Let's see.
Well, I didn't print it out, but it would be online.
This is probably the best one, or what do you think? Okay, Slide 10. So.
Wait, give me a second here.
So, you mentioned, okay, 1954, there was mining, and I think that's, that's pretty clear, and that establishes there was a vested right. So, after that, it seems confusing, because there's all these actions going on, on that chart, but it's actually really simple. Hanson says, once there's a vested right, it is only abandoned if two actions occur. Number one, an intent to abandon, and then number two, an overt action evidencing intention to abandon all right to the vested mining right. That's, and staff has to show that by clear and convincing evidence. So, despite all the noise of all the different things, because we were trying to show, look, that hasn't happened, not only that, but there is actually intention to mine, it's really simple. Was there a vested right? And the answer is yes, in 1954, when they were mining during that period. And then number two is there clear and convincing evidence of abandonment. I know it's confusing with all the property transfers, and that part, I think, I think we should clarify, I think we have a laser pointer here.
So, if I could ask our counsel too, I'm fairly clear on abandonment. I feel like we have a lot of evidence that there was abandonment, and I can, I can talk about that or ask a few questions there, but really the one I'm struggling with is the vested right. So, that, that document, to me, says, and correct me if I'm wrong, and then I want to hear from counsel, that document says that there was mining happening on that Brunswick site, period. Whether there's vested rights or not is something I'm trying to figure out.
Mm-hmm.
And what it means, but there was only mining happening at that date, that's the only proof I've seen for that date. So, but the vested right you're asking for is far beyond that site.
Yes, the Hanson Brothers case, one of the principles, and I laid out the two-part tests, and there's three principles from that case. One case is the entire business operation case, says you can't break it down into individual things. If they were doing something that was part of the whole vested mining right, when, when that date happened, October 10th, 1954, and they were, they were mining, and they were pulling material out of that shaft within 1,000 feet of a roadway, the entire business operation that was part of that, which is the whole mine and the surface properties which were associated with it, that entire operation vested at that date under the entire business operation principle, under the Hanson case.
So, that, based on the Hanson case, that's where you're, where you're making this thing?
Yes.
Okay. Could you want to?
Thank you, Supervisor. So, if we were to state with certainty that we think there is a vested right here, we agreed that there was mining occurring, but in stating that we believe at some point this right was vested, we would need to know the exact physical and operational scope of that right, because if you say there's a vested right, then unless abandonment were found, they would be able to continue that right, the exact operational and physical scope of it. They have not provided adequate information in the record for us to make that decision. We have some pictures, we have some old photographs, we do not have technical documentation, and I'm not going to, well, we do not have what we need to make that decision. And this is a company that has access to everything, that could be ultra-clear as to what, where they think their physical limitations were, the equipment, the, just everything they would need to determine the exact scope of those operations, and that has not been provided to the county, which is why we are not going to state there is a vested right, because we can't articulate what the scope is.
I'm sorry, that, that is incorrect. We provided a lot of information, production records on the site, maps, and this issue was not even raised in the, in the staff memorandum. So, we're hearing this on the second day of a hearing that, well, you know, maybe the reasons we brought up in the, in the staff report were not the right reasons, maybe it's scope, you haven't shown scope enough. This is like a whole new complaint about our petition on the very last day, and it's not right. We have maps and all sorts of information, actually, the, the, it's almost the second to last slide shows what the scope is. So, this seems, this seems like switching, well, we impeach the evidence that they brought in.
It's in our staff report.
Yeah, and if I, if I may, I'm raising it, not staff, I'm raising it as a point of clarification. And I, I think I've got, I need to think about the answers I got from both of you on that one. I want to turn to the market argument that you're using for abandonment, and again, I think I just need clarification. You've mentioned several times that it was the market that caused you, caused the mine to close, and therefore, you can still show intent to stay open, and I'm just, like, is gold mining, I know there's, it's an exception, they've considered an exception to some of these, is that what that is about? Is that an exception, because, I mean, businesses close and open because of market forces, and that is a voluntary decision. You could do something else with the land, you could do something else that brings in money, you could maintain it as a historic gold mine, you could use it to try to.
Use technology to do it cheaper.
Or to use new technology, or to sell bogus, you know, mining, mining certificates or something, there's lots of economic things you could use that land for. So, the idea that it was just the market that stopped you from working and therefore your intent was always to keep going, feels just really odd to me. Is it because it's a gold mine that you're using that argument?
Yes, I mean, that, that's, that's what it says in Hanson, is mining is different, because the actual asset is the material that's in the ground, and even though market forces may change how you need to go about it, or, or make you pause when it's, when they fix the price of gold for a long time, yeah, that, that definitely makes sense. In this case, we're talking about billions of dollars of value of gold in the ground, that's the asset. And the question is whether or not it's been abandoned, and duration of use may be a factor, but only a factor, I'm sorry, duration of cessation of use may be a factor here, but when you look at the, the economic cycles, that explains, okay, that's why there's, there's this, you know, duration of cessation here, because these cycles are really long for gold, and the value of, of the asset is really high, so there's no proof that they gave this up.
So, it's high sometimes, yeah.
What's that?
It's high sometimes, like now, but it's not always high. So, I just, I struggle with that argument, because you can use it then for everything and anything. The market changed, so, but I didn't want the market to change, so I didn't intend to abandon.
I don't think you can use it for everything. Buildings, the cycles are much, much shorter. This, this is an asset that, that they didn't even really hit their stride on this mine until 50 years, 60 years into the mine being developed. The cycles are way different, and I think it's even more applicable in this case than it was in Hanson.
Okay, so, based on Hanson, can you, can you estimate, or is that just too subjective? Like, how long would that right extend, based on the fact that you're waiting for the market to rebound?
Yeah, I think, I think the, the right extends into perpetuity unless it's been abandoned under the test under Hanson. It's a constitutional right, it extends forever unless it's been voluntarily relinquished.
Okay. And you're basing that, and so, I think what's coming clear to me is how much of this we're basing on Hanson, and that that is, there's a bit of legal interpretation there, right? And if you want to.
What we're basing it on are, are the facts, and all I'm going to say is, this screen is still not sufficient, it would not be sufficient in a court of law. We're trying to make sure you have, because everyone's threatened us with litigation, we want to make sure that in a court of law, this would be deemed substantial evidence. This is not substantial evidence. That's all I'm going to say. I'm not going to tell them how to do their jobs. This would not be sufficient for a judge. That's what we're looking at to protect the county, whom everybody has threatened to sue.
Thank you.
That is why we have that opinion.
Yeah, I mean, I'll just, and I don't, I'll end for now, I may come back with some more, but, yeah, to me, the, the difficulty with this was, I kept asking county, but explain this piece of vested rights to me, but it's your job to make a clear, convincing case for it.
Yeah, and we, no, no, we don't need to make a clear and convincing case, I'm sorry, we have to show by preponderance of the evidence that mining was occurring on October 10th, 1954, and we've done that, and I respectfully ask that the board not dodge that duty. You have a duty today to make that finding, that vesting did occur on that date. If you avoid that, you're not fulfilling your duty as essentially a judge weighing evidence. You need to make that finding and then make the next finding, did abandonment occur? And it's been stated, well, you know, right after 1954, they sold everything off and they didn't want a mine. We've shown evidence that said that's not what we're doing, we're preserving all the rights, we're keeping them together as a package, we're keeping the strategic properties together, and then it was auctioned to Godoty, and Godoty kept those same properties together and bought more properties. If, and I'll, just, if I can point out, if, if you have questions about specific parcels, like this, just one part of the Brunswick property was the sawmill, and that was sold and was used as a sawmill. The, the lot six and seven was never sold off to anybody who didn't own the rest of it and was able to resume the mine, it was kept in the package. It's crystal clear that that lot six and seven is vested, the surface of that property. Centennial, it was sold off for only four years, never used for anything else, and then it was bought by Godoty after he bought the whole package of the mineral rights. He said, I want that piece, and I, he brought it in and then owned that ever, ever since, it's been part of the package. I understand the sawmill, you have questions about it, but if, even if you had questions about a saw, the sawmill property, just that surface property, that doesn't negate the vested rights on the rest, even if you had questions about that and said, I'm not sure about that. Lot six and seven is crystal clear, and the underground rights are crystal clear that they vested in 1954, and there has not been clear and convincing evidence, they've been abandoned since. There's a lot of questions.
Thank you, thank you. I think, I just, our duty, we're not judges, we're in a quasi-judicial role here, but we're not judges. So, to my mind, our duty is to find clear, a clear argument for what you're saying, and I find a clear argument that there was mining, and I don't want you to put words in my mouth, there was mining on that one site, I see that, and if that document is valid, I assume it is, and I see that. I'm not saying I see a vested right in that, that's the part I'm struggling with, and I'll just leave it at that, but our duty is to do the best we can with the evidence that you've provided, and if it's confusing and uncertain, right there, you know, that's, that's been my struggle, well, I'm not sure I can decide on the vested part, because it's confusing and uncertain. Well, if it's confusing and uncertain, and that burden was on you, then that may be determined what I can and can't say about vested.
Yeah, I, I just don't see what's confusing about what a miner is on in 1954.
Okay, all right, well, obviously, obviously, we're confused, so, we're going to, we're going to move on here.
Yeah.
Thank you, Heidi, thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
I just have a couple of questions myself, and I, just a couple of comments too, and I'm really not looking for a response, these are just kind of my thoughts here, but I don't think we're taking away the right to mine. We never have said you can't mine that property. But we have said, it does require a use permit, and you, you stated, and it may not have been in relation to this, that times have changed. Times. But we have said it does require a use permit, and you, you stated, and it may not have been in relation to this, that times have changed. Times have changed dramatically since 1954. That's one of the reasons for a use permit. And these mines have been struggling, most of it has been through environmental review. It's a very, very hard process to go through. A mine is not a simple retail or even industrial process. It's a big deal, it's a big deal. Times have changed. And I also, you know, just another thing I was thinking of here. MGOLD did ask for, MGOLD did receive a permit for de-watering and exploration. Now, to me, that's just normal mining operations. That goes on all the time. You guys made that very clear. So if MGOLD felt they had vested rights, why did they go for a use permit? And they got a use permit. That says to me, you don't have to agree with me, that says to me MGOLD did not think they had vested rights. And if MGOLD didn't have it, neither do you.
There was testimony, there was testimony from MGOLD on why they, they did not...
Okay, that's okay, that's okay, I'm just telling you my thoughts.
If I could make a...
I do want to know, Mr. Brock made a statement, could you tell me what piece of property he was talking about with that statement?
We're going to look for that slide.
Okay.
We're going to look for that slide.
The statement was, you're not buying a mine here.
Chair Schofield, just on the slide, these are the two properties that were represented for sale by Charles Brock. They're identified as lot six and seven of Brunswick site.
Pretty much a primary area of the mine.
You said it wrong, it's right here.
Well, that's okay, I'm not asking Charlie, I'm asking. I do want to say, though, that the comment that was made about Mr. Brock was that he had his 15 minutes of fame. And I want to say that Mr. Brock is a highly respected person of this community, highly respected realtor. And I believe as a realtor, he had the obligation to tell the purchaser of that property that this was not a mine that you were purchasing. So I just wanted to point that out, too. I thought that the statement that he had his 15 minutes of fame, that was not necessary.
We didn't say that, I'm sorry, that was the county council who said that. We did not say he had 15 minutes of fame.
Well, then I would say it to you.
Yeah, understood, and that was meant actually not in any insulting way, and I know he is a respected member of the community, and I, we felt bad that his name was being bandied about back and forth. That's why...
Okay, but the point being, he had an obligation to state that to the buyer of that property. All right, I don't really have any further question, oh, I do have one thing, I just, a clarification. In all of this time, has there been a, what is the term, an interim management plan? There has not been an interim management plan.
No, there has not been.
Yeah, and I know, Heidi, you brought that up yesterday, that's, that's still kind of an issue to me, too.
And there's no requirement for that. There's no requirement for an interim management plan for this operation anywhere. The county's not shown any requirement or shown that they have a notice of violation that you didn't do that, because it clearly does not apply. There's no requirement for that.
It appeared to me if it was an idle mine, you needed to make that requirement. It appeared to me, okay.
It's only for surface mines, it's only for surface mines.
Certainly, it's only for certain mines, it's certainly not this mine.
There was only one operation on the surface after, after 1976, when SMARA was enacted, which, which was over the threshold of SMARA. That had a reclamation plan and was reclaimed. There are, there are no other operations which triggered SMARA, therefore, all the requirements that were listed, such as an interim management plan, respectfully, they don't apply. That legal argument fails. I would just ask, I would just ask one more request, please, that the board actually look at 1954, October 10th, and confirm that there was a vested right on that date. I know it's a separate question of abandonment, but, but I ask that you please look at that date and confirm that there was mining going on. We have annual reports, we have maps, we've submitted a tremendous amount of data that proves that. And if you look at, if you look at that date and don't confirm that, you're not doing the job you're supposed to be doing today. So I respectfully request...
No, 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 no reaction, no reaction, that's okay, that's okay. All right, thank you, Chris. Are there any other questions or discussion at this time?
I guess I do maybe want some clarification.
Yes, go ahead, Heidi.
On that, and I'll ask our council, we are being asked, we have a question on the exemption on the EIR, and then we have a question on, can you rephrase that? Because we're not being asked in this resolution to make separate determinations on vested right and abandonment, right? We're asked to make, say yes or no on the whole package, is that correct?
Yeah, it's the whole package, it's, they want you to determine that they have vested rights, and if you do that, that means the scope of whatever they say they are, that's what they would be allowed to do here, with regard to every piece of equipment identified, from locomotives to the offices, everything. They are entitled to, everything they've taken off the property, they're entitled to have that there again.
But we're not...
And all those uses.
We're not voting on two separate questions, whether they had vested rights separately from whether it was abandoned, we're voting on one question, right?
Do they have a vested right and was it abandoned? Those were the two questions.
So we will have to say yes or no, or yes or no, or no in that, but, okay, thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
All right, I know it's a little early, but we're going to take a quick break here. Not very long, I think five minutes. Okay, so we're going to take a quick recess, we'll be back here at 10 o'clock.[1020.73]
All right, if you take your seats, we'll reconvene the meeting. All right, but at this time, before we go into our deliberations, I'm going to have staff go through the resolution and any changes that may have been made to the resolution. Brian?
I have one question first, too.
Oh, before this?
I guess it doesn't matter when I ask that question, so go ahead.
Okay, well, yeah, all right.
I apologize.
Go ahead, Brian. Diane?
Yeah, I will be doing that, Chair, thank you. And so, let's start with page one, I believe, the, if you scroll down, I'm not sure who's doing this, if you scroll down at page one, let me just, that's a great place to stop right there. What we did was general cleanup of grammar and punctuation. We also modified it just a tad to reflect comments and questions yesterday from the Board, the public, and the petitioner, and of course, staff's responses to those. So, just in the, and I'm not, I don't think I need to go through every one unless somebody wants me to stop and explain it, but the first whereas, it just reflects the procedural history of the project, which would, is currently before the county here. And so, it just reflected the timing of the planning commission hearing on this matter, and then again, you know, the date that this petition was filed. And then, the next whereas also confirms the petitioner's burden of proof to establish the vested right to mine, including the scope of that vested right. That reflects what the law says. And then, the rest are just cleanup items. If you go onto page, well, the second page here, whereas, and I'm not sure why there are different colors here, but the two whereas's next to each other with the purple and the red one, as its staff's, as its states, we wanted to confirm that both staff and the petitioner disagree regarding the legal standard of abandonment, that it really isn't clear, and that we believe a court will ultimately determine that standard. But we were all relying on Hanson to the extent that we could, but I think we agree that we disagree on it, and this just simply reflects that, this change. So, this is reflective of the discussion yesterday. And then, the next, the be it further resolved, is a, is common language that you would find in any type of findings, or even in a contract, where if one provision is found invalid, it doesn't invalidate the rest of the, of a contract, so to speak. So, here, if one provision is found to be incorrect, it doesn't invalidate the rest of your findings. If there's an issue with one finding that a court might determine, it doesn't invalidate the rest of them. Since we're going to end up in court, we wanted to build some suspenders on that. On the next page, keep scrolling down, once again, this language, I think more for, it is, it identifies, once again, as to the standard of review, while we disagree, we've heard the petitioner, that they believe the more rigorous, clear, and convincing standard applies, even though we disagree. But regardless, we have made a finding that we believe that our, the finding is still correct, that there is abandonment under that standard. And so, this finding confirms that even under what they believe to be the clear and convincing standard that should apply here, we disagree with that, but we say that we think this meets that standard, that they have failed, or they've established, that we've established that there has been abandonment of the use. All right, and the next, I think the rest are really just grammatical. If we keep scrolling down to page, what would be six, it would be item number six, let's keep going. There we go. Yeah, this is just more formatting. We felt that this wasn't all that significant, and that it was necessary to make a finding on it, so we just took it out. We felt it wasn't significant. And then, if you scroll down to number nine, we wanted to, this is once again based on discussions, a lot of, there's a lot of aspirational discussions. Well, you know, we have an, for example, an exhibit that is a declaration that says, well, we think that they wanted to mine. We think those are aspirational, and we wanted to make a statement that some of these, if they're not an objective manifestation of an intent, that they're merely aspirational and reflective of a property owner's desires, but that doesn't mean they intend to mine. Simply, well, maybe someday in the future, I might think about it. So, and then, we just clarified what the three ultimate findings would be here in number 10, that because we are answering, there really are two questions that have emerged as a result of the petition. One, that they failed to present sufficient evidence to support a finding of a vested right, or to determine the exact scope of that vested right. And then, B, we wanted to clarify the standard that we have from Hanson, that why they think they were abandoned, that subsequent actions and failures to act were consistent with the finding of abandonment as found above. So, once again, all of these changes were consistent with the discussions from the Board, petitioner, and staff, and comments from the public yesterday, and then the rest were just grammatical and punctuation.
Okay, and then, so just a clarification.
Yes.
If the Board today votes the planning department's recommendation, these are the, this is the resolution that we are voting on?
Correct.
If this Board finds that there is vested rights, then this will have to be changed.
Correct. We would come back with revised findings to match the statements of the Board with regard to the vested rights, yes. And, and just for clarification, if I could, Chair, those findings were previously provided to us by the petitioner in their petition, so we would be able to put that together for this Board.
Okay, all right. All right, Sue, you got a question before we proceed into deliberations?
Just one quick clarification, since we actually sit here at a county level. Could you please tell me where in the county land use code is, if there's a, the clause on abandonment and for non-conforming?
Yes.
And where it is?
Yes, in the 1954 ordinance, we pulled that up, and there is abandonment after one year. Do you want me to read it to you?
Please.
Yes. If any non-conforming use of land and/or a building or structure is abandoned and/or ceases for any reason whatsoever, for a period of not less than one year, any future use of such land and/or building or structure shall be in conformity to the zone in which it is located as specified in this ordinance. So, they would have to get a use permit, if it ceased after a year.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Chair.
Yeah, if I could just say one thing on that point, that's exactly what the Hanson Brothers case ruled on, that, that the Nevada County ordinance, the word discontinued in this context, it means that two-part test. So, it doesn't just mean, well, we've determined you've stopped for, you know, a year, it means that two-part test. That's, that's precisely what that case was about.
Very good. Are we ready to begin deliberations, then?
I have one just comment, if I could, that may not go specifically to this issue in front of us, but it's something my constituents would care a lot about. I know that I personally have spent many, many hours going through the documents we've been provided, your hundreds of exhibits, our multiple exhibits. I've taken my role here extremely seriously, and have done the best of my ability, not as a lawyer, to understand very clearly what it is that we are deciding on today. Your suggestion that you made today, and also yesterday, that if we don't do what you're asking us to do, we're not doing our jobs, is disturbing, and I want my constituents to know.
Can I clarify what I mean by that?
I want my constituents to know that I am doing the best to my ability, and I believe my colleagues are too, and my constituents need to know that. Thank you.
If I can just clarify what I meant, because maybe that was misinterpreted.
Please, I'll run the meeting, okay? Yes, Chris?
Chair, thank you, thank you, Chair. I meant that there's a two-part, there's a test in Hanson, that says, is there a vested right, and was it abandoned? And I'm not saying that if you don't do what I say, that you're not doing your job. I'm saying that you have to follow that two-part test and make those findings, and, you know, you're going to, you're going to vote, how you're going to vote on this, based on how you weigh the evidence and the, and the law. But I'm just saying, you have to do, do that two-part test and make those two findings, was there a vested right, and was it abandoned? I'm not, I'm not telling you, you're not doing your job if you don't agree with me on, on those conclusions. So, just to clarify, sorry if, if that was confusing my statement there.
Thank you. I think it's pretty clear, we've all been taking these two questions seriously.
Thank you. Can I request, Chair, just a short recess, so we can look at this resolution and just provide some brief comments on it? Because we, we got it right before the hearing started, and we've been engaged in discussing with you, and I haven't really had a chance to talk to my team.
Yes, I think that's fair, Chris. How much time do you need?
I think 10 minutes would be more than sufficient.
All right, we'll take a brief break.
Thank you so much.
All right, at this point, I'd like to reconvene the meeting. Diane, you had a comment to make first.
Yes, I did, thank you. In the report, we actually discussed this last night, we're removing two paragraphs, and it was items six A and B, because there, even with the exploration, there is no surface activity going on on the property that would warrant currently an implementation plan and the annual report. So we are willing to take those absolutely out of the findings, and I thought that had been done last night, and I missed that this morning. So that was brought to my attention, thank you.
Okay, are we clear on that?
Correct.
In the resolution, in the resolution.
In the findings, which are in the resolution.
Yeah.
It's six A and B, yes. And C would be A.
Very good. All right, Chris, you have a response.
Yeah, thank you Chair. First, I would just like to request that the version of the resolution that's been shown on the screen be entered into the record. It has some comments on it in the margin, it's different than what I was handed, so I'd like that to be preserved in the record.
So, and just a comment, I was surprised to see that those were up there, so those were just formatting, those are just clerical corrections, we will make those before they go in, we did enter it in Legisdar, I don't know where this came from, so.
Yeah, yeah, I still, I mean, our request still stands, it has, you know, the name of who did it, which could be or could not be relevant, so I would.
Those will be cleaned up, is what I just represented.
Okay, well, we want the one that's not cleaned up.
Chris, if you would, just rapidly go through your, whatever you say will be part of the public record, but I don't believe we're going to debate them.
Okay, thank you, thank you Chair. So Chair, I mean, I'm not going to dwell on it, I think there were changes made, and none of the changes correct, but the significant errors we see in the resolution, we still believe it has significant factual errors, legal errors, the wrong legal standards or unclear legal standards, and we believe it comes to the wrong conclusion. So that sums up our comments, thank you.
Very good, thank you. All right, we're ready for deliberations then? Okay. Lisa, I think to some degree you've already done yours, but if you would, start it off.
Thank you. Well, I, you know, I kind of stated my opinion earlier when we were in the question portion, I apologize for not being more clear on what the process was going to be, this is my first year up here as a supervisor, so I'm still in learning mode. I really appreciate all the work that's been done on both sides here. I think that our legal counsel has done an excellent job, as well as our staff, with presenting the argument here. As my colleague Supervisor Hall stated, we are not attorneys, so we do the best that we can with the information that we get. And it's interesting to me, you know, I, there's lots of different names that have been thrown around in this hearing the last couple days, but I just want to say, I worked extensively with M. Gold, and Dave Watkins, and Pat Nelson, and my good friend Eleanor Knetsor, who worked for them when they were trying to process their application through the city of Grass Valley. And not once was there ever a discussion about a lawsuit, or if we, the city, didn't create the outcome that they wanted, that they were going to sue us. So it's a little hard for me to sit up here and have kind of your first, the first opportunity that I've had to look at this project publicly, coming from such an adversarial position. You stated yesterday that the reason you didn't go for the vested rights when you started in 2017 and then 2019 was because you wanted to be good citizens, that was the exact term that I believe your attorney used, and I appreciate that, and I hope that we'll continue, you'll continue along that vein, and you'll allow us to have the opportunity to look at your project under the use permit application that you had filed with the county since 2019. So I don't believe that vested rights have improved based on the information that we've had here today, I think I would agree with the information that our counsel has provided to us, and go from there.
No.
No, this has been really interesting, and I guess I, for myself, do we agree they mined there? Yeah, I do. I feel like this is above my pay grade, to be totally honest. I work for the citizens of this community, I have constituents on both sides of this conversation, I'm not against mining, I think that it's done in a lot of places the right way, I have one in my district couple that actually work and do a good job. So this one has been, this has been very interesting, I have dug and learned, and like you Heidi, I think we've really done our due diligence on this. But I don't know that we've, you keep talking about the two-part, and I get it, and I'm understanding the constitutional right part of it, but I think that has to be somebody that's beyond my experience and my ability to make that big decision. And again, I work for people in my community, I'm trying to look what's going to be the best thing in Nevada County, and so with that, I'm just going to have to, when we get ready to vote, I have my reservations, so I want to appreciate all the, I listened to what you all said, I think that's one of the hardest things when you have to sit up here, is we don't get to talk about this in between us, we don't get to come up with great questions, so, you know, we learn from each other as it comes up today. Lisa's experiences, I would have loved to sat down and really listen to what you learned with M. Gold, but we really worked hard on this and not having, we didn't have that ability to do that. Staff, you've done a great job, and appreciate all the work that went into this. I mean, this thing, it's like reading the Bible for the day, okay? This has been my fun reading for like a month, and some of that's even a bit above my head, the history is intriguing to me, we come from a really rich community of history, and I love history, my family's been here since the 1800s, so it's been, it's like a walk through the past in time, and we're in a new time, we're in the 2023, and I feel like we have, this is a big decision, and so with that, I would move on to.
Very good. Hardy.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to thank the petitioners for the respect you've shown our board and also to our community here today, I think it's, the process has worked. Thank you to outside counsel and our county council for assembling the details, I think it's a lot of good work and a lot of highly detailed components. And I just wanted to say, I don't have anything against mining, or logging, or resource extraction, I grew up directly across the street from the mill there, and kind of looked, it was a sawmill then, it's always been a sawmill in my mind, but I do have a lot of mines in my District Five, my fifth district in Nevada County, and proud that they're doing it the correct way, and so I just want to say that. I'm also only using the information that's been given to us relative to this process, and not your, not your, any of the other permit or regulatory pieces in front of the Board at a future date, so just want to let you know that. It was a little concerning to me that we're told that the staff report is erroneous, but at the same time, we're told that the county has to meet a burden of proof, that substantial, clear and convincing evidence, and that, in my mind, is exactly what the staff report assembled for us, they put those details together for us, so that piece of bias I don't think is necessarily existing in the, in the information that I've gotten directly. You know, we've been asked to look at this whole decision broadly and collectively, we've been told that the Idaho-Maryland mine is a collection of mines and land with both underground and surface assets. In my mind, no mining activity has taken place since the early 50s, there is clear and convincing evidence for abandonment, in my mind, not just on the parcel in Brunswick, but the property as a whole, none of the other collective mines have had resources extracted from them since that period. And I asked a question yesterday, mining activity, in my mind, is excavation, blasting, tunneling, removing ore, processing ore, the sale of mined products of any kind, not just utilization of surface soils and rock, that's what mining is. In my mind, mining is not subdividing mine land into parcels for sale as residential developments, mining is not selling the land for industrial purposes, mining is not sawmill or wood products, et cetera, things like that. We've been asked to weigh in if there were mining activities occurring on the site, I believe there were, yes, at some point in the mid-50s, mining activity was clearly an activity on that parcel. Continuously, no, there were other, many other uses of all of those parcels, mining was not one of them. Supervisor Hall talked a little bit about the economics related to mining, and I just wanted to make one quick point on that, is that the economic factors and closure are voluntary, they're not involuntary, so once an industry becomes inviable, at that point in time, it's not the responsibility of the county or our community at a later point to resurrect that industry, it's up to private business and capitalist motive, and when they feel it's appropriate, it's the burden to meet whatever current regulatory framework there is. That's why land use decisions, as well as our constitution that you've pointed out, are progressive, our community economics and environmental values change over time. We've been told to take collective, collective action on these facts and make a determination, we can't be told to carve out certain facts for one determination, still, this board, and I think it's been mentioned multiple times by my colleagues, we have to take a collection of all the information in front of us, that's our job, because we're not attorneys, we're not judges, this is quasi-judicial, it's not judicial, it's quasi-judicial. So considering all the factors, the mine doesn't have a vested right because it abandoned the mining activity. The current zoning and regulatory process applies, in my opinion. Our community has grown and changed in how we view the environment in which we live, what we hope to provide future generations, and how our ordinances and laws support that vision. So this board represents and protects the values of the community today, right now, and right now, I do not believe you have a vested right.
Thank you, Hardy. Heidi.
Thank you, thank you. I want to thank staff also, I know hundreds and hundreds of hours have been put into this, a lot of late nights and early mornings, as information comes in late, and we scramble to make sure that we understand it and what each side is saying, I will say very clearly, because that's what I understand that I've been asked to do, is to strictly look at the facts and evidence in front of me, my opinion doesn't matter, only to the extent that I'm trying to decipher the facts and evidence and be very clear about that. I think it's very unfortunate and difficult for us, because we're not lawyers, and this isn't a courtroom, and we're not judges, that we're depending, having to depend, all of us, on the Hanson case, which gives us some guidelines and some precedent to work off of, but is very different and leaves a lot of interpretation unanswered, and to my mind, that is something that we're going to need potentially the courts to help us with, it's not something I feel equipped to do, to make some decisions about that. So based on all of that, I've had to see, am I, do I have facts and evidence that are clear and substantial in front of me, and I can't say that I've had that on the vested rights, I still have way too many questions and uncertainties. I do agree there was mining there, clearly, but that leap from mining to vested rights is a big, difficult one, and I just haven't seen enough evidence to feel very secure and clear in myself that it exists. Thank you.
Thank you, Heidi. Well, I, I spent pretty late last night going over what I've written up here, but it's kind of frustrating to know that no matter what we say, it's going to be argued in court. That's quite frustrating to me, so every point that we make is going to be argued both ways. So again, as my colleagues have said, we're not, we're not judges, we're not even attorneys that I know of, but I kind of focused on, on the note that, of vested rights, the determiner vested rights not needing to secure a permit to mine, so long as vested rights continue, and no substantial changes have been made in the operation, except in accordance with SMARA state regulations in this section, I kind of question how much state regulations have changed substantially since 1954. But I, without going into all this, I looked at the Hanson case, and where it was brought up by staff here, the fact that Hanson, within two weeks, is able to get it up and operating, to you, that's your, your response was that that's irrelevant, that's not what we're looking at here, but to me it is, because with the sale of all, all the equipment, all, almost virtually everything, all the mining equipment, there's no way this mine could operate, even if you were given vested right for years, and it would cost millions of dollars, to me, that means there are substantial changes that did come about, and I've done a, I have other pieces here, if I can give it to the, to the clerk for the record, if they can read it. other pieces here, if I can give it to the clerk for the record, if they can read it. But I do want to say, and I said this earlier, this opinion, if we go with our staff here, does not mean that Arise Gold cannot mine, it simply means they have to get a use permit. And yes, that use permit is going to be very difficult because of what mining represents, and again, even the location of where it is and its proximity to the city of Grass Valley. So it does not mean you can't mine, you just need to continue to go forward and make it work, as everybody in the past since who knows when, has gone out there and gotten a use permit, as I mentioned earlier, on the exploration. Everybody, including you, who were comfortable with going forward with the use process until May of this year, when the planning commission denied your application because of CEQA, environmental, and some of the other issues that you had. So I just want to make that clear. Now, since all the points apparently will be argued to a higher authority, I'm comfortable following the recommendations of Nevada County staff, finding neither the petitioner nor any other party has a vested right to mine at the subject property. And with that, I will entertain a motion.
I will make that motion, do you need me to read that into the record?
To some degree, that would be great.
Okay, so I move that we pass the resolution, finding that mining operations were abandoned as early as 1956, and neither the petitioner nor any other party has a vested right to mine at the 175.64 acre subject property comprised of the Brunswick industrial site. Do I need to, their assessors, is that good?
That would be fine, I just want to make it clear that you're moving in the resolution as we revised it today.
Yes.
All right. Very good, is there a second to that?
I will second that.
All right, we have a motion Supervisor Swarthout, seconded Supervisor Bullock. Madam Clerk.
District Four.
District Four, yes.
District Three.
Yes.
District One.
Yes.
District Five.
Yes.
District Two.
Yes. And with that, this hearing is concluded, and we are adjourned.